Please rise for the -- I'd like to lead into the moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll have roll call.
Commissioner Ann Sorgi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Chairman Bonick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sudas Little.
Here.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
Thank you. So that brings us to Communications, Proclamations, and Presentations, and our first one would be the Department of Health and Human Services, an update. And my colleague Bob. No, please, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Greg McMorrow, this is my colleague.
Bob Brown.
We are two-thirds of the Health and Human Services Commission, the other being Mike Smith. Mike's wife is seriously ill and couldn't be here tonight. I don't know if we gave one of these updates every year or not, but in brief, we are chartered with distributing a relatively small amount of funds to those people in the county who maybe fall just below or just under that safety net. So what we try to do, and I'm honored to work with Bob and Mike, try to find ways to use $12,000 to $15,000 every year reasonably. And in some cases, it's giving money to other non-for-profits, like Leland County Neighbors as a recipient. Bob led several programs over many years. And I think we don't have any kind of official role, other than to represent those citizens in our county who maybe need some help that can't be delivered any other way. And we advocate with the state, the employees of the state who service our citizens. Sound familiar?
Absolutely. I mean, we work hand in hand, of course, with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And I'm sure everyone's pretty -- I mean, I'm sure everyone on the board here is familiar with who they are, right? So if you have questions, feel free to ask us. This is -- I've been on this board for four years, so this is my first time ever in your presence. So again, feel free to ask us, and we'll certainly try our best to answer any questions you have about what the entity is that we are. And Greg, I might add, is just a wonderful asset right now. I know this also, some of this pertains to, we have a new opening on the board, which I'm sure you're all aware of. And so we'll either make recommendations, or in the past, because this is the first time for me that we've ever been asked, the current board's been asked to give recommendations. In the past, it's always been this group that makes that decision. I'm a stay-appointed board member. So there are two done by the county. So just to throw that in, in case there's any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Lautner.
Actually, I've, for many years now, we have asked for recommendations from the boards for appointments, and we take that into consideration, but then ultimately, we will make that recommendation.
I spoke to Laurel today, voice to voice, trying to better understand what the expectation was of us, but that helps. I don't want to take the labor a lot of time, just to say that we are serious advocates of working with the state, and a lot of credit to Bob and Mike, who put particular focus on using some of these funds to recognize the state employees who service our county. So we do a lot to try and keep the momentum and the enthusiasm on a very, very tough job with our APS workers, our CPS workers that come here, and we also engage as best we can with tribal members on those issues which are warranted.
I was interested in, you talked about Leland County Neighbors and the different, what kind of programs do you, I mean, do you advocate or work for with them?
Greg is more entwined with them than I am. They, you know, they're a resource. They're a resource for the county. They're a wonderful resource. They, you know, they, they, and I'm sure everybody here is aware of what they do and what they contribute, if I'm not mistaken. Because tell me if you're not aware of what they do. I mean, they're a wonderful, LCN is, has a, has a strong presence, and we work together, DHHS and LCN. We make referrals to people that, or they'll make referrals to us. If they can't help them, then we'll help them. If the state can't help them, then NCA, LCN, might possibly have a niche form, will. So it's, it's a, there's a great amount of collaborative effort. And what I try to make sure that I see personally is there's not a lot of redundancy, that we eliminate that, we keep shrinking it down to just the core of what we can help with, who can do what, and how we can support those efforts. So, you know, and I think LCN is just an amazing, we're very fortunate in Leland County to have LCN outside of the state to help those residents of the county. So I don't know if that answers your question, Will, as best as I can.
Okay, yeah, it doesn't really address any kind of things that you, you say you collaborate with them, but I guess I don't know, does that mean with the laundry project, or with some other things you?
All of those, all under, on that whole umbrella.
We don't, so this last year, we gave them $2,500 of our unrestricted funds. $500 was targeted specifically for Christmas, $25 gift cards to give to residents. Another, it was a year marked for some laundry project, and part of it is unrestricted that we give to them. But the total allocation of our budget was $2,500 that we gave to LCN. So we tried to not restrict at all, but part of it is targeted, we, some of these are traditional programs that have gone out to the county for many years. We had one benefactor who recently died, who had given several thousand dollars every year to LCN. So it, you know, we just try to help out as best we can. We don't give them that much money, because we don't have, our whole budget was, I think, 14, it was $15,000.
$15,000, that's all.
Commissioner Wessel.
A question, thanks for being here. Our residents are served by Grand Travers County Health and Human Services slash Leland County slash Hellcasco County. Do you then, as our representative to the Leland County Board, also serve on the board for the three-county?
No.
Health and Human Services Board?
Everyone is separate.
They have their own boards.
All three have their own separate boards.
And they all have their own budget, so for example, Grand Travers has a board made up of, I have the names of the board members.
Grand Travers County residents only.
Yeah. But no, all three counties have their own boards.
But then the director that's located in Grand Travers County also meets with your board when you meet.
That's correct.
She oversees all three. Kristi Loggins, who's the director of the Traverse City and DHHS.
Thank you.
Grand Travers Board is Ralph Saford, and many of you might know Ralph from years past. Mary Pat Randall and Loretta Aaron.
Commissioner Rushton.
So just as a clarification, your board serves strictly those residents in Leland County, is that a true statement?
That is correct.
Okay. And what you're telling us is, for the most part, your funding is directed to those collaborative agencies that provide certain resources to the citizens who have previously qualified? Is that a true statement?
Yes. Essentially, yes.
Essentially, yes.
Depending on, we really focus our efforts on those agencies that service our county. So LCN pretty much is focused only, and I happen to have a small volunteer role at LCN, and during that exercise, LCN only services folks who reside in this county. And the same is true of our commission. Not to be, I don't want to confuse the two, but to answer your question, yes, it's specifically for our residents.
And if I may mention, maybe not a lot of the audience is aware that Greg McMorrow is also our leader in our opioid task force, and he actually is the driving force behind the task force. And his leadership on our team is an asset that I feel is not replaceable. He digs deep into health and certain statistics in regards to our county. He's very well-prepared, and I just want to thank you for the service that you provide to our opioid task force.
I'm honored to be part of it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other? No, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, so next, we'd have a Northern Lakes Community Mental Health update from Mr. Kovak here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not here alone tonight, but I'm going to start and do a couple minutes of my usual presentation for you. And thank you very much for having me and having us here. We are, you know, we try to highlight individuals who actually utilize our services, and we decided this year that we are going to focus on services to individuals who have an intellectual or developmental disability. While they make up probably 20% of the people we serve, we spend an equal amount in our budget to provide services for people who have an intellectual or developmental disability. So I'm going to make my statements brief, make sure I don't exceed five minutes, and go over some of the numbers with you, and then also make my plea that you fill out the survey, the questionnaire, that we get 100% representation from Leland County. I know we'll shoot for that. And I'm Carl Kovak. I've been the CEO, I'm finishing up my fifth year. And so it's nice to visit with you again, and to reaffirm that the connection that we have with our six counties, Leland, Grand Travers, Wexford, Musawki, Roscommon, and Crawford, is the key to a publicly accountable mental health system, behavioral health system. That you, through, you know, the fine representatives that you have on our board, Commissioner Wessel and Betty Boucher, really represent Leland County very well. And it's, it's a pleasure to work with them. I mean, we have a board that's very dedicated, focused on serving people in our six counties. So they, their job is to make sure that we're responsive, as Northern Lakes, to the needs in Leland County and our other five counties. So there we go. I'm going to go through the numbers, and we're going to make it very limited again. Go over about, you know, fourth column that says Leland, those are the numbers that I'm just going to review. You have a pie chart that's also for Leland County, and then you have a pie chart that reflects all of this, all of our six counties. So you have information for fiscal year 18 for all six of our counties, but I'm going to focus on Leland. And as we start and go down, the first number I'm going to stop on is grand total cost by county. You see the $3,182,246. That's the cost of the services that we provided for residents of Leland County. And we compile this information based on residents. We have three, three ways that we check for that. So these are services that people who are designated as residents of Leland County receive, that $3.182. That's about a half of a percent increase from the previous year. So it's a little bit of increase. Your numbers didn't change much comparing fiscal year '17 to fiscal year '18. We served one less person. We serve 177 people, and that was 178 in fiscal '17. So a small drop. The number of services, if you keep going down, the service transactions provided row, it's about halfway down the page, their number is 42,327. So the, the number of service transactions went up about 1.2% over fiscal '17. The, and, and the rest of the information is derivative of that. Talk about the cost of services, you'll see, for example, in Leland County, of $3.1 million, 2.4 of that goes to people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. A lot of people require a lot of intensive residential care, and, and so therefore representing the cost, that increased cost. In fact, actually, my calculator, my head calculator's not working very well, but that's a good high percentage, well over half of the budget, of the amount of dollars spent. So I will stop there and try to answer any questions.
I have a quick question in regards.
Sure.
You made the statement that you provide intensive residential care. Now, are you providing this care for these clients in their homes, or are they in a professional setting?
It's a combination. We have what we call specialized residential services homes that are adult foster care homes that are then specifically licensed to provide specialized residential services. But we also provide a lot of service in individuals' homes, community living support services, respite services, excuse me, for the caregivers who need a breather once in a while, so we provide those respite services. So, okay, all right, well, I'd like to introduce one of our case managers, Heather Flannery, who's here, and then also Lori, the mom, Brent, the dad, and Tyler, the person who were privileged to serve, and really.
Hello, Tyler.
Very appreciative that they've come today to talk about their services, and I'm not, I don't know what they're going to say, so.
Okay, I know what I'm going to say. No, I, and I was just going to talk a little bit about the services that we have been getting through CMH, and I just have to say, they've been life-changing for our entire family, not just for Tyler, but for mom and dad, too. And Tyler receives the CLS time, the community living support time, he receives respite time, he goes to Grand Travers Industries in Traverse City for a day program, two days a week, and then he also receives psychiatric care services through CMH, Northern Lakes. And so just, I was just going to run through those. The CLS, the community living support, so Tyler with that is able to access the community with a caregiver, so it's just not a mom taking him somewhere. And so he's out and going to places, and it makes him feel more independent, and he is participating in the community. He, right now, he goes to the Y two days a week, so not only is he out and about, but he's doing something healthy, too. And then the respite time, he spends weekends at a small group home that we, and there's another family back there, too, that we have partnered with to create a group home here in Leland County. And this is a huge milestone for our family. It's good for Tyler and good for us, and it's, again, been life-changing, and it's a life goal for us to have him kind of set up before we can't take care of him anymore, so that's just been huge, and that we don't have to worry about him just being placed somewhere, so. And we're, so the four of us parents have created it, and it's, you know, we're doing it under our control, but all those hours and services for those caregivers are through CMH. And then the Grand Travers Industries, that's a great program, and again, he gets access to the community and small groups, and he has activities with other members at GTI. And there, he also, through CMH, receives physical therapy services, which I was very pleased with, so is his physiatrist, and his doctor, very pleased with that. And the other thing that happens there, and I need to mention his case manager, Heather, she comes to meetings there, she's involved with what's going on with them there, and as well as we have Tyler, one of his diagnosis is autism, and he receives some psych services with Dr. Neil Fellows through CMH, and I have to say that it's just top-notch care. I am a retired physician, I'm a pediatrician, and I just cannot believe the care, and the case manager comes with us to the appointments, makes sure he has the appointments and all, and we just recently had to get an urgent message about some med changes and all, and it just, the treatment was just top-notch, above my expectations, so. Overall, we feel very happy to be in with CMH, and we feel like we have a great case manager, and the services provided, we're very happy with. I, I did say, there's just a few things, you know, that I have always wished, from the day Tyler was born, that he had come with an instruction manual, and unfortunately, you know, that sometimes when you talk to somebody at CMH, you get one answer, and you talk to somebody else, you get another, and all of us parents do talk to each other, so we know, you know, we have different case managers, that kind of thing, but that's the whole point of CMH, it's not a cookie-cutter thing, everybody, and they call it the PCP, or Person-Centered Planning, that everybody has their own plan and everything, so I know it's impossible, there's not a guidebook that, you know, run along, but sometimes that would be nice. And I think, and it just, you know, training of the caregivers and everything, and some of them are higher quality than others, so that's been, that's been a frustration, just to find the caregivers, and, you know, it would be nice to have help with that. And I was just going to mention, too, that we moved here almost four years ago from Illinois, which it's been unbelievably, cannot even express how much better services are here than in Illinois, so we've just been very happy all the way around. So if you have any questions for me?
Commissioner Lautner.
Sure, thank you. I'm in the, so how, how many children or young adults then are in the group home that you?
Just two.
Okay.
Yep, the two boys.
All right. Fantastic.
Commissioner Rushton.
I'm curious, you made the statement that services here are so much better. Why is that?
Well, Illinois has very poor services for adults, that there's a lottery system there that you go into, whether you're awarded, you know, and you get so many little tickets in the lottery that they literally draw from, depending on, you know, if you're homeless or, you know, that kind of thing, so. And here, that wasn't a question at all, just it's.
So is Tyler and his family a resident of Leland County?
We, the home where he spends Thursday through Sunday is in Leland County, but we actually live in Grand Travers.
Oh, okay.
I really appreciate your coming tonight and sharing with us, because when Mr. Novak asks us to fill out the evaluation forms, it's all those numbers, and it's descriptions of programs, and tonight, you put the essence behind the program, which really makes it helpful, so now I'll, I'll do a better job of filling that out.
Life-changing, yes.
Commissioner Ansorgi.
You meeting up and with the other parents, is that a, you know, that sounds so obvious and simple, but is that a, something that, you know, is actually pushed, that, you know, that people do make those connections?
Not at all. And it was fate that brought us together. We happened to sit next to each other at a meeting.
Okay.
And started talking, and I'm like, that's why I wanted to, you know, and, and I have said, you know, it's all the HIPAA rules and all, that you can't talk, because both our boys were through the TBA ISD program and the Life Skills Center, and, you know, and so nobody's allowed to say, hey, you should talk to this mom or whatever, and I said, they need something like speed dating or something for the parents, and say, I want to do this group home, I want to do this, and just kind of get everybody together.
I hope he's writing all this down. It just sounds so obvious and so good.
That's what I said, if parents could all get in or have some kind of chat room or something where they could say, I live here, I'd love to get together with so-and-so.
And sometimes, it's just a matter of sharing information. Hey, you know, this is a resource, or this worked for me, and that didn't work so good, you know, that kind of thing.
Exactly, to that instruction book.
I was just going to say that, well, we're happy to meet Tyler, and I think I've met the other gentleman some years ago. We, we still have to have him get down to pet the baby cows, that's what we were always going to do, and we haven't done that yet, so maybe Tyler would come, too.
One of the things I was going to add is that, you know, we talked about the specialized residential settings, okay? That's not for everyone. And what we're trying to develop are things like what they've developed, the supportive independent living kind of programs or settings. And I know, you know, Heather and, and our staff, our case management staff for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities are looking to try to develop those living arrangements that are, that are, that fit more with the desires and the needs of the people we serve, because you mentioned the Person-Centered Planning. That planning ends up with an individual plan of service, which is geared to reflect the needs, the wishes, the desires, the dreams of the people we serve, so.
Commissioner Wessel.
It is, it's my honor to be on the Community Mental Health Board, and I compliment Carl and his staff, and all of the advocates that work with the staff and come to the board meetings. Our biggest challenge is balancing the books at the end of the year, and paying for the services continues to be a challenge, and one of our roles as board members is to be that advocate, to make sure we, we have the funds necessary to serve the critical needs. But thank you for coming, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
All right, then that brings us to approval of the board minutes. We have June 8th and November 13th. Commissioner Lautner.
I've moved to approve regular session minutes of Tuesday, June 18th, 2019.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. Do we want to do November 13th? No? I'd like to put them off. Okay, that's fine. So we'll wait on those. So then that brings us to approval of the agenda. I don't have any changes or anything, or late additions that I know of. Commissioner Wessel.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. That brings us then to public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have before me a plan, 1993. I have documents at home substantiating this plan, a lot of plans that are two feet tall. And in early 1993, the county spent over half a million dollars to generate the first plan. But the county has no jurisdiction over properties. So with that, I'd like to pass some questions, because I was triggered by it, by the report I read on the internet called "The Normalization of Deviance," which it took us five and seven, took five and seven astronauts to death. The final report was completed in 2014. Gets me to questioning, planning and zoning, I have some questions for the commissioner. I have some questions for the commissioners. Is county planning and zoning discretionary or mandatory? Have the electors been informed, whether it's one or the other? And regarding the general plan, have county plans or planners succeeding in regulating land use for 40 years or more? Have county planners ever forced property owners to obey the plans? We've got hundreds and hundreds of goals and objectives in those plans. Has county planning and zoning honestly served its purpose? Does county planning and zoning have jurisdiction, control, regulatory authority, police powers over private property? Yes or no? Does county, does the county have jurisdiction over the property it owns or leases? What is the purpose of planned planning if no authority or jurisdiction over private property exists? What is the purpose of having a planning commission? These questions, as ordinary citizens and attending meetings for over 30 years here and at the township level, we can start, try to help me understand what government is supposed to be all about. And I find that the normalization of deviance from our U.S. Constitution and the Michigan Constitution causes to do a lot of harmful things to our communities. So I'd ask these commissioners to answer all these questions and follow up with me. We'll talk to you at the next meeting you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda. So that brings us up Northwestern Regional Airport Commission, the request for approval of a resolution authorizing land acquisition. Commissioner Rushton.
I would move to approve by resolution the acquisition of land located at 718 Dual Road, Traverse City, Michigan, in compliance with the Federal Aviation Administration's approach standards required with the recently installed GPS approach for improved safety of aircraft landing on runway 1836. Second.
This would be a roll call vote.
And I'll insert that resolution into the minutes that was provided to you.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Do we have a resolution here?
I just had it in an email, I don't see it here.
I do bring it here.
Okay.
But is that, that's okay, that's what you...
Approved by resolution. Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sussell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Anzorgi?
Yes.
Chairman Bonick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. And that brings us then to the sheriff's office and the renewal of the boarding agreement with Cherry Land Humane Society. Commissioner Wessel.
I move to allow the county to enter into a new three-year agreement with the Cherry Land Humane Society for boarding of animals not to exceed $300 per month.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Commissioner Rushton.
I would move to allow the sheriff's office to order four 2020 Ford Inceptor SUVs from Signature Ford, not to exceed the amount of $136,836. Once delivered, allow for payment for an outfitting of the vehicles with necessary equipment, total not to exceed $158,000. Those funds are to come from the Motor Pool Fund, ending in 661. Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Commissioner Sussell.
I move to recommend, excuse me, I move to the Leelanaw County Board of Commissioners to accept the MMRMA RAP grant reimbursement in the amount of $2,625. Funds to be deposited in fund number ending 960.000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And the potential Suttons Bay Village Officer Agreement renewal?
Did we give...
Yeah, I just passed them out.
Okay.
And under Sheriff Morgan's chair, but we were able to enter into, the past contract has been three years. This is a one-year extension. The terms are basically the same, except some issues that are highlighted that are fairly minor, but under Sheriff Morgan's chair, if you have any questions.
Evening.
Do we have any questions?
Commissioner.
I would move to recommend, I'm sorry, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the Suttons Bay Village Officer Agreement renewal as presented.
Any questions? Commissioner answering.
Was there just an issue that they felt that there was too much time being spent by this officer outside the village?
The new village manager wants to get a better handle on the mileage, and so his solution to that was to have the village pay for a GPS unit to be installed in the car. We don't have any issue with that, and I think it's basically for his comfort level.
Commissioner Lawler.
And then, so the miles, it just says currently at the point 58, that'll change with the IRS?
If it changes.
Changes, that'll change, okay. And then the, for the sum of the compensation, that covers the cost of our deputy?
Ms. Swick, he says yes.
If Ms. Swick says yes, I, I'll support the motion. All right, thank you.
It's supposed to be at our cost. Whatever our cost is, that's what, you know, all those villages agreements have signed up.
Right, good, good to you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. So then that brings us to the County Planning Commission, and if we look at our sheet here, I think there's, we've got it as 3A. I don't know if you've got one of these. I'm sure they're on everyone's desk. Yeah, that's the new, that's the resolution. We have a motion to...
Do you want to look at this? No, I know what we're doing.
It looks like this.
I just don't know where mine is. Pass the resolution to rescind the ordinance.
Right.
By resolution.
Commissioner Lewis.
We need a motion.
Yes.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2019-009, Resolution Adapting and Ordinance Repealing the Leelanaw County Zoning Ordinance as amended.
Support.
This would be a roll call.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Anzorgi?
Yes.
Chairman Bonick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sussell?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. So then, that, then that brings us to the potential revolution for the general plan. Commissioner Wessel.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2019-010, asserting the right to approve or reject the Leelanaw County General Plan.
A second.
I'm just, I guess I'm wondering, we're, we're passing a resolution to allow us to approve or reject? I mean, I don't understand why we have to have a resolution to do a resolution, but I mean, is that, yes.
This is what I learned tonight, little update today. The resolution is asserting your right as the Board of Commissioners to approve or reject the Leelanaw County General Plan. If the resolution were to pass, that's forwarded to the Planning Commission, and then the general plan comes back to you for your acceptance or rejection. If the resolution fails, then that is noted to the Planning Commission, at which time, if they choose to approve it, then it's just disseminated from there and does not come back to you. And she is available if you want her.
Thank you for that explanation. So then this would be a roll call vote as well. Commissioner Lawler.
I just wanted to, may I speak to the...
Sure.
...the motion. I didn't support us approving this resolution, because I don't want to see it come to this board as a yes or no vote. We've avoided that in the past, because if we just allow it to be written by Planning Commission, it's their document, they approve their document. In the past, we thank them for their work and place the plan on file, and the plan is what it is. It's, it's just a plan, but it really has no teeth. So I just have concerns that if we actually say we endorse or approve this plan, that there'll be some confusion among the general public, that everything in the plan must be done. I had to leave my Planning Commission meeting early, so I don't know where the latest recommendations went, but as I left the room, they were considering adding a lot of new language to the general plan, such as that the future will require new tourist jobs for our aging population, and it spoke more about jobs. My concern is, I really didn't see where jobs fit into our, our general plan. Populations change all the time. They wanted to add language, it spoke to us working with our historical society to identify preservation opportunities. Again, I didn't see that that really fit into our general plan, and if it did, then that wouldn't be all inclusive of maybe our, our more culture within the county and our arts in the county. And then it spoke to adding energy efficiency and renewable energy to the principal goal. I see that more as an issue that should be just addressed by the industry, and again, it is an ever-changing, ever-changing industry. It changes at an increasingly rapid pace. It spoke again about adding energy efficiency and renewable energy. It spoke about the sources of power, but didn't include all sources of power. Basically, it's a general push for solar and wind within Leelanaw County. And I didn't think that that was exactly appropriate either, to just address that one segment. And then it didn't speak about future removal of the panels, and I think that that's a real important environmental issue. It does speak to environmental issues, but not removing of the panels. So that being said, if we are to actually endorse this plan, I'm afraid that that could be used in those ways, as I spoke of earlier, and be pushed. So it's worked in the past, we've done real well, we, the general plan has done what it had to do, just by allowing the, the Planning Commission to do the general plan and accept the general plan.
Commissioner answering.
We're not debating the general plan at this point in time, whether we want it or don't want it, what we want in it, what we don't like about it. We're just saying, are we going to approve it or reject it? That's what we're voting on tonight. So based on the comments, I would expect that you would like to have some input into that general plan, so I intend to support this resolution, so that we have that opportunity.
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess I, do we get a chance to, to change it? That's the whole thing. If we have to either accept it or reject it, we don't change it. You know, so, so that's where I, that's where I have a problem with it. I don't want to have them do all that work and then we reject it. You know, I, I, I think the, what the board has done, in, since I've been around, is just, we, we let them do it, and it becomes part of their general plan, but we don't accept it or reject it. You know, and we just say, thank you for doing that work, and, you know, and we appreciate it. And that's, I, that's the way I would, I would, I'd hate to say, see us reject it, because they put things like what she's talking about in it.
Commissioner Wessel.
The Planning Commission is a body that we appointed. The Planning Commission reports to the County Commission. The county plan is our plan, and because it's our plan, we ought to review it, and either approve of it, suggest revision of it, or reject it. So I feel strongly that we, we do need to take responsibility for the plan, because it is our plan.
But this resolution doesn't give us options for revision.
So we can deal with that. If we decide that we want to reject the plan, then we can work with the Planning Commission on a revision of a plan that we can accept.
Okay. All right, so any other comments? All right, well, yeah, Commissioner Lawler.
My comment is that I speak to the issues I have within the general plan, and these are just a few of them. I speak to them because I am confident that if it comes to a vote of this board, it will be accepted, and, and that's my concern. I do not see this board even sending it back for revisions, so it's just my take, but those are my concerns.
Any other comments? We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Anzorgi?
Yes.
Chairman Bonick?
No.
Commissioner Lautner?
No.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
No.
Commissioner Sussell?
Yes.
Four yes, three no.
Okay, so the motion passes four to three. Thank you. So that brings us then to the acceptance of the 2020 Tire Grant. Commissioner Rattenbach.
I move that the Leelanaw County Board of Commissioners accept the Scrap Tire Cleanup Grant Agreement between the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Eagle, and Leelanaw County, in the amount of $4,216, and authorized signature by the Board Chairman. The Planning and Community Development Office, along with the Solid Waste Council, will implement the grant.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes seven zero. That brings us then to the road closure update.
Well, let me start, and then Commissioner Lautner may proceed, and as well as Commissioner Anzorgi. As you know, the Ironman took place on August 25th. Since that time, we have discussed this, I think, every month. I've had dialogues with officials from the city of Traverse City, from Ironman, from Traverse City Tourism, the Village of Empire, the Leelanaw County Road Commission, the Mayor of Traverse City. Commissioner Anzorgi and I met last month with the Regional Director from the Michigan Department of Transportation. The last piece of the puzzle we were trying to get information on is the state police. Obviously, they played a major part in this year's event, and when we called them six weeks ago, they requested that they have time to do an internal investigation first before they would meet with us. They completed that investigation, and then Commissioner Lautner and I drove up to Gaylord to meet with them. The reason it was Gaylord, the state of Michigan is about the zones, and the original zone for this area is a Gaylord office. So Commissioner Lautner and I met with Commander Caldwell, Inspector Hahn, and Lieutenant Kek yesterday. And it was cordial, at times stressful, at times brutal, honest discussion, but positive, I thought. And I appreciate their feedback, and I think they appreciate our feedback. So at the end, I thought it was time well spent, that we went up there, and thank you, Commissioner Lawler, for giving up half of your day. And thank you, Commissioner Lautner, for giving up half of your day. And I know you left another meeting early to meet me there, so I appreciate that. But I'm just reviewing the key points that the state police made about the race. And these are points that they made to us. And their biggest concern is about the media coverage that has portrayed them in a negative light. And so they wanted to make some points themselves. And I've taken notes, and Commissioner Lautner, please intersect if I misspeak on anything. But one thing that was clear, the Michigan State Police does not endorse any special events, whether it's Ironman or any event. They are there to help with the traffic flow, with the safety. By their involvement, that does not mean they endorse that event or any event that they are associated with. Just like our Sheriff here's gave you a report that he and his staff do many events. It doesn't mean they support them, but it's their responsibility to maintain the safety of the residents and of the roads. So I want to make that clear. The original plan for them, for the Ironman, was to have the bike portion go on 633, which is the center highway in Leelanaw County. That was the original plan. Sheriff Borkovich was part of that planning team. He was strongly opposed to that route and made his comments and concerns very well-known. He verified that statement this morning to me. Based on the strong comments of the sheriff, the decision was made to switch the bike race to M72. The state police said they were not involved with that decision-making process. Once the decision was made to switch the route to M72, the police, state police, were invited to participate in the planning process. The state police simply agreed to protect the safety of the citizens and the participants on the condition that their personal cost would be fully reimbursed by Ironman, and that did occur. One thing they want to clarify, that every officer who worked that race volunteered to work. They were paid, but they chose to offer their services. So we did have police officers from out, throughout the State of Michigan, but no state police officer was forced to work the event. So they wanted to clarify that. The state police confirmed the information that MDOT official presented to Commissioner Anzorgi and I on October 28th, that there are different laws and conditions in the closure of road, and if it's a bicycle race or a non-motorcycle use of the road, MDOT does not have the authority to make that decision. That's what Mr. Liptak told us in our meeting. The state police agreed with that comment. We did review the legal opinion that Mr. Cole provided us. They agreed with his legal opinion. However, there are other state laws that allow the state police and the MDOT to make the decision to close the roads without going through local units of government. I talked to Mr. Cole this morning. He did agree that the state police does have that authority if they choose to use it. Seldom is it used for special events. Most time, it's for accidents, storms, whatever. But do they have the legal authority to make the decision? Mr. Cole says yes. Normally, there's a process that both MDOT and the state police would like them to go through and get the request from local units of government. That did not happen this time, and there's no debate about that. No one is saying that a local unit of government has an official asked to close the roads. And that's confirmed. There was debate about County Road 677, which is the road by Empire. That was a county road that was closed. The state police informed Commissioner Lautner and I that, yes, that road was closed, but that was approved by the former Road Commissioner/Manager. He's the one that made the decision, authorized the closing of that road. They went by his word. Whether he went to the Road Commission or not is not an issue of the state police, that's an issue of the Road Commission. But I did check, that did not go to the Road Commission. It was never on the agenda. The former manager made the decision, and he was part of the planning process. I did verify that he was part of the planning process. So that decision was made locally by the former Road Commission, not by the state police. Probably the biggest issue of concern that they had, and the most controversial and the most emotional, is the allegation that ambulance from the Cedar Fire Department could not cross to 72 and transport a patient. In your report, you have a two-page document from the state police. That's attached to my document. It's labeled on top, Cedar Area Fire and Rescue Department ambulance. I just want to state, that is not my notes, that is directed from the state police. I asked for a copy of their report, and they gave that to Commissioner Lautner and I. But basically, their version is that the ambulance coming from Cedar was not a medical emergency. They met prior to the event. All the local first responders knew there was a process in place. There was an emergency management center in place, that they were told they should contact the center to let them know they're transporting or an accident or any emergency, and they would work with them to notify the officers. Their version is that when the ambulance from Cedar came, they were transporting a patient. There was no sirens on, there were no lights on, and it was not a medical situation. They're claiming that the officer came and talked to the driver of the ambulance and verified it was not a medical situation. So you have their report. That was their biggest concern of all the media attention, saying that they stopped ambulance coming. Out of respect for the Cedar Fire Department, the chief, I passed on their comments to him this morning. He came and saw me personally this afternoon, and he talked to Commissioner Lautner and I just prior to this meeting. He completely disputes the allegations and what's written in their report. Now, I'm not going to get involved on what happened there, but he just wanted to make sure that he does not agree with what is written in the state police report. He says the patient was in a medical situation. There was issues with heart and blood pressure, and the driver admitted knowing that it was an emergency situation. Yes, they did not have their ambulance lights on. They said they don't always do that in cases.
Correct.
But they said they did call 911 to let them know there was an emergency situation coming. So what you have in the report from the state police and what the Cedar Fire Chief told us do not agree.
But his comment was, did stand true. They did tell the ambulance driver he would be able to go up, turn down 72, go down to Cedar Valley Road and take that runway route. It was about a 10-minute delay. And the Michigan State Police, they confirmed that North Light was on the other side of the highway with its lights on, waiting for the patient. So even though they were not running code, it was a serious situation.
I did talk to Matt Anzorgi. He's on vacation, but he confirmed that there was a medical center in place, and there was a process in place that if there was an emergency, they could have called. The state police agreed that they would open, or they would actually close the race temporarily if there was a situation. That did not happen. For whatever reason, that process was not followed. So he did confirm that they did have a plan in place for those type of emergencies. However, for whatever reason, there seemed to be miscommunication on what happened with this specific case. So that is by far the most controversial issue with the state police. And it's a major issue with them, and also it's a major issue for the Cedar Fire Department.
Right.
Because I'm certainly not going to speak on his behalf, but he made us feelings known to Commissioner Lautner and I very clearly, that he disagrees with what's in the report from the state police. I'll keep going on. As I said, there was a plan in place to deal with medical emergencies, and there was a system in place that were discussed prior to the race. The chief of the state police did make it clear that they are very sensitive to local needs and communities' requests. Did point out correctly that when the decision was made to have the race on M72, not a single unit of government or official contacted them with any concerns. Now, they realized it's a first-time event. People probably weren't anticipating the major challenges. But he did say, no one contacted them with any concerns. They have not made a decision on what their role, if any, will be for the 2020 race. They are very concerned about their image and some of the negative comments made about them, allegations. He actually encouraged myself and Commissioner Lautner to let local units of government know to weigh in and give them their viewpoints on the 2020 race. They realize that we, as a county, do not have official jurisdiction, but he certainly was receptive to getting feedback from our county board on our thoughts about the 2020 race and what, if any, role they will play. Once again, he has stated numerous times that they have not made any decisions whether they will participate or not in the 2020 race. They would like to have feedback from local units of government. It was not a pleasant experience for them to hear the negative comments about their troopers. And Commissioner Lautner and I both stated, we have a great deal of respect for the state police officers. They were put in an uncomfortable situation. They probably did the best they could. Many of them were not local, so obviously, they could not answer the questions that people were stopping and asking them. So obviously, they were frustrated, some of the officers. And we certainly agreed with that. They did point out probably correctly that the Ironman organization and Traverse City Tourism could have done a much better job of promoting the impact this race was going to have locally. That, that's, they're not, it's not their function to promote the race and the consequences of the race. Their, their provide safety. So could a better job have been done by those organizations to let people know what really was going to happen and what the roads were going to be closed and how they're going to do it? Probably. They agreed with that. And once again, they stated probably correctly, that's not their job. Their job is to provide safety for the roads and for the participants, and they chose to participate because both the sheriffs from grants from Leelanaw and Benzi County said their staff obviously could not handle it, and that's why they were involved. Commissioner Lautner, anything else you want to say?
A couple of things I would say. We definitely agreed that unfortunately, they were the face of all of the problems with the Ironman race because it was a road closure itself. I was disturbed to hear that some of their officers were yelled at or that obscenities were yelled at them. And that greatly disturbed me, because I think we've been pretty clear that we understood all along, they were doing their job. However, it was so much different than the plans that we heard, how it was going to There was discussion about the length of the race. It just went on so long that they didn't expect it. And I agreed with one of the officers who mentioned that he wishes they would do-
But there was a time limit that if you're not done with this time-
There was a time limit. The guy's qualification.
Yes, some qualifications.
That you can have the qualified to do the race. They mentioned one of the bikes was actually a fat tire winter bike trying to race this race. And so the rolling closeout, the rolling road closures, we had heard were going to happen, to open up and that traffic would be able to flow, just didn't. So as far as next year, of course, they encouraged better planning, more input. Chad spoke to that. And it's really all the best we can do, other than they're open to comments. If you don't want it through your township, if you don't want it through your county, to let them know. So, or let them know through us, we can let them know.
They actually encouraged us to notify the township officials that they would welcome comments from townships. Whether they wish to pass a resolution or not, or ask for locals or not, they would value input from any local units of government as well as citizens.
Commissioner Anzorgi.
This is not an Ironman issue. This is a process issue. There is a state law for special events that was not followed, and that's the bottom line for me. What's the process? What process should we be using? What process should MDOT use, and what process should the state police use? And there's a very clear state law saying this is what the process should be, and neither MDOT nor the state police are following that process. So that's my issue. I want to know, I want an answer to say, what is the process that we should be using? Should we be following the state law, or should we just ignore it? And I don't think that that question has been answered, and I think we need to get that answer. What is the real process? Yes, the state police have emergency powers to close roads. You know, the bridge is out, they're going to close the road, you know, weather issues, those kinds of things. There are police powers out there for emergency things. But there's a separate state law for special events. And it does not differentiate between motorized, non-motorized. It just says, if you're going to close a road, this is the process, or a portion of the road, this is the process that you should be using. And that process was not used. And evidently, they don't think that they need to follow that process. That's the issue for me. What is the correct process? So from my perspective, I think we need to get that question answered. And the right, because it involves Michigan Department of Transportation and the Michigan State Police, I think the Attorney, the state Attorney General is the right person to answer that question. How do you, when you got a, apparently, they feel that there's a conflict in state law. Who answers that question? Well, you can either sue and go to court, or you can ask the state Attorney General to give us a ruling. And I think that's the appropriate thing here, because it does involve two state agencies. So from my perspective, I think we should move forward with the resolution and get the process identified. What process should we be following in the future? And that's where we need to be, is let's address what's going to happen in the future. Yep, things happen in the past. Let's identify the process and use the process in the future. That's my two cents.
What you have is a revised proposal from Commissioner Anzorgi.
This is, was reviewed by our council, put together.
Do you have a question? I don't have one.
Yes, I'm ready.
It somehow dismissed me. Thank you.
Commissioner West.
Well, I, three months ago, I was opposed to doing a resolution. I appreciate the patience as we've had the meetings, and I appreciate you going to Gaylord. I'm still not sure that we need a resolution, but I'm willing to support it. But same time, I hope we continue to work with, with Ironman and the Tourism Bureau and see if we can provide some support for next year. I think it's a good event. If done well, it gives us a chance to show off our county and give our residents an opportunity to see a real, a real event.
But I will support this resolution. I commend Tony and Melinda and Chad for the background work.
Thank you. Commissioner Rattenbach.
Has a motion been made? But Tony?
No.
Are you?
I will, if we're ready. You know, would you? Go ahead.
I move the Leelanaw County Board of Commissioners approve Resolution Number 2019-011, Resolution on the Closing of Public Roads.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
I respect Tony in bringing this issue to the board. I think that no one's above the law and that we need to follow through with this as recommended. Unfortunately, I'm, you know, sorry that Ironman has kind of been caught in the middle of this, because it is a process question, not against the event at all. And I hope that the event will continue to take place in the county, but with the proper rules in place and the proper understandings made ahead of time.
Commissioner West.
I will support the resolution today because I think it is important, the process that is used going forward. Many of our residents enjoyed the race, participated in the race, but many of our citizens felt or were inconvenienced and island-bound, you might say. So I think this might be the right step in the right direction for us to assist. If they're going to be planning these type of events that impact our citizens- If they're going to be planning these type of events that impact our citizens to the level it did this last time, I think it's an important process that we take this step to make it very clear on where, how the roads should be closed. And quite frankly, I think how the public should be informed about how those roads are closed and when they're closed. So I will support this today.
I guess I still have, I still have a problem with it. I think that, that a lot of things went wrong, a lot of things weren't planned well. I think it was a first-time event. I think it's, it's something that is, it brings a revenue to this community and to Traverse City at a time when things have slowed down because of schools starting and other things. So I just don't think we were as prepared as we should have been. I think there were some misunderstandings. If you leave, you know, from, the unfortunate thing was with Cedar's Fire Department, you know, and obviously, if you, if you look at it from the state police side, the procedures that were supposed to be followed for an emergency were not followed as far as with Mr. Ansorgi, you know, at the, at 911, Matt, he didn't, he didn't get any call to say that it was an emergency. So I, I can see where the police, the state police would say what they're saying. And I think we've, we've, we've made our point. We really don't have any authority in this, and to send it to the attorney general, I think is, is not going to be productive. I think it's that, I think that it's, it's now up to the townships, it's to the road commission, to the other people who really have an input into this to say, we've made it known that this needs to be done. But if they don't, if none of them do anything, it'll, it'll be exactly the same. So I don't think going to the attorney general, getting an opinion on this is, is going to be very effective or beneficial. I think we, we've pushed it as far as we can push it, and, and so I really don't, not going to support this resolution.
Commissioner Sutis Little.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Chairman, and initially, I had some concerns as well, but I think reading this version of the resolution, basically, what Commissioner Ansorgi is trying to do is seek clarification in terms of the process itself. What is the law? And, and he is correct, the attorney general is the place where you ask that question when multiple departments are, state departments are involved. So I know it does say we're filing a complaint that it wasn't followed, but by and large, the actual action requested is that of clarification of the existing laws. Is, are they, the correct laws to apply? Is the law applied or is it not applied? And if it's not, then what are we following in these situations? And I think that's important to know, so I will be supporting this.
Any other comments? So we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ansorgi?
Yes.
Chairman Bonnet?
No.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rettinbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutis Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Six to one.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, then that, that brings us then to the Caliber Public Safety Software Renewal.
I don't believe we have the information. Mr. Plamon is still away at Deer Camp, and I do not feel comfortable discussing it, nor does the clerk at this point. We did get a revised bid. Our concern was the original proposal was expired November 18th, but Laura called the company and they extended their quote to December 31st. I believe it's for, we thought it was for the detective work, but Under Sheriff Morgan's not aware of that either. I mean, it could very well be, we're just not experts in that area. So this time, if you'd like to postpone till December...
Both pieces?
Yeah, we're just, we're just not prepared to talk about it.
That's fine.
Do you have that information? But you want more information, we don't have to provide to you.
Would we do that again also for B then?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so we'll just...
Put that on the December agenda.
We'll just move them out and move them forward.
Both of them?
Yes. Good. So then that brings us then to Senior Services Contract Renewal. Do with A, with diverse flowers.
I would move to waive bid policy requirements and approve Leelanaw County Senior Services to renew a contract with Helpers Flowers Help Services LLC and to provide medication management at a rate of $68.89 an hour with a 3% increase each year beginning January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022, pending corporate council review and approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Leelanaw County Family Coordinating Council, Commissioner Rettinbach?
I move that the Leelanaw County Board of Commissioners waive the policy on bid requirements and approve Leelanaw County Senior Services to renew a contract with the Leelanaw County Family Coordinating Council totaling $2,000 to provide support for laundry project beginning January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022, pending council review and approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Commissioner Rettinbach?
I move that the Leelanaw County Board of Commissioners waive the policy on bid requirements and renew the contractual agreement between Leelanaw County Senior Services and Linda Lingard to provide foot care services at a rate of $25 per service to begin January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Munson Home Services?
I'll give it a try. That's right. I would move to waive bid, waive bid policy on bid requirements, to waive board policy on bid requirements and approve Leelanaw County Senior Services to renew a contract with Munson Home Services to provide personal care services at $29.82 an hour, respite care services $29.82 an hour, homemaker services $29.82 an hour. Medication management services at $68.89 an hour, foot care services at $25 an hour, and transportation services to and from medical appointments at the rates of base visit rate of $59.63 per additional hours at $29.82, between 60 and 100 miles at $44.72 hour, and over 100 miles at $44.72 and 65 cents per mile with a 3% increase each year beginning January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022, pending corporate council review and approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So then that brings us to Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency. You have any breath left?
I have a breath. You want me to pick up again? I have a numb tongue tonight. I'll give it a try. To, to recommend, to move that the Board of Commissioners waive board policy and bid requirements and approve Leelanaw County Senior Services to renew a contract with Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency to provide meals on wheels for seniors residing in Leelanaw County for in Mount Knott's, which exceed $28,000 annually, annually, beginning January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022.
Board? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to the Yellow Sheet with six F and six G.
I would move to waive bid requirements and approve Leelanaw County Senior Services to renew a contract with Health Department of Northwestern, Northwest Michigan to provide dental services for seniors residing in Leelanaw County at the rates listed above, beginning January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022, pending corporate council review. Those rates being initial visit, oral health exam, $100, maintenance visit, $68, initial dental, initial denture treatment, $50, dental treatments and procedures of various fees based on the Northern Dental Plan sliding fee scale.
Second.
Commissioner Rushton.
In reading over the contract today, and I had inquired if this was a means-tested program. It is a means-tested program, but the language in the contract does not indicate that when they're describing their scope of work. It states, the way it's stated right now, it appears as though it's available to anybody 60 years of age and older without any specific language in regards to the services being means-tested. So I would like to have...
Would you like to postpone this till December? This doesn't start till January?
We can do that.
Or you could just amend it to include means testing and have corporate counsel come up with the word.
Okay, yeah. That's kind of what I was thinking. Yeah, the residents of the county 60 years of age or older, and whatever language they want to use to indicate that these services are for those that are means-tested and qualified.
So you'd like a revision contract to qualify that as means-tested?
Yes.
Do we have a second on that?
Just a second.
Yeah.
Did you want to speak to it at all?
No, I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Commissioner Ansorgi.
You know, when I see the sliding B scale, that's what I assume, but that is what they was talking about.
Well, you know, in that, the Northern Dental Plan sliding scale, that's a scale that they use at their location. So if you and I as a resident would walk in and we make $100,000, we're going to be paying at the top of the scale.
Right.
Okay? So the fee will be determined on their income, but they must first qualify here through our senior department, that they are a...
Now I understand the distinction. Thank you.
Commissioner Rettinbach?
There is a motion on the floor that was seconded by Commissioner Lautner made that, and then I seconded. And then are you offering a separate motion or...
I'm amending.
To amend our...
She's amending.
I'm amending. Okay. To include that language.
Somebody seconded it. Commissioner Wessel.
Yes. So we'll have to vote on the amendment first. So, and this is to add that language to this contract. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll vote on the whole thing together. All those in favor of the contract?
Aye.
With the amendment.
Yeah. And all those opposed of that part?
Thank you.
Motion passes seven zero, both times.
And we'll get that change made in the...
It's just verbiage.
Yeah. All right, so that, then that brings us to six G, I believe. Commissioner Russell.
I move to waive the board policy on bid requirements and approve Leelanaw County Senior Services to renew a contract with North Michigan Health Services Incorporated to provide dental services for seniors residing in Leelanaw County at the rates listed in the document provided, January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022, pending corporate council review and approval. And I assume, including the insurance of a means testing, if may be.
So do we, okay. Any other questions about it? So that will be added to this thing, that there'll be means testing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Then it brings to R L K Investments and Comfort Keepers. Back to our white sheet. Commissioner Rettinbach?
I move to waive the board policy and bid requirements and approve Leelanaw County Senior Services to renew a contract with R L K Investments, Inc., D B A Comfort Keepers to provide personal care services at $29.82 per hour, respite care services at $29.82 per hour, medication management services at $68.89 per hour, homemaker services at $29.82 per hour, and foot care services at $25 per service with a 3% increase each year beginning January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022, pending corporate council review and approval.
Second.
We missed the piece in there, didn't we? Transportation at $29.82 an hour with mileage rate of IRS rate?
Okay, include that, please, with a mileage rate of IRS rate.
The whole thing as it's written.
Yeah, yes. Thank you.
Really, we could just say that, as written or as presented.
Okay. But this gave us motion.
Is that the change, is that okay with the second? Okay. All those in favor?
Yes, absolutely.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So that brings us then to Share Care. Commissioner Rettinbach?
I move to waive the board policy and bid requirements and approve Leelanaw County Senior Services to renew a contract with Share Care of Leelanaw Incorporated to provide care coordination service as stated for the following services, volunteer coordination service, assessment service, and a three-year increase of 3% each year, beginning January 2021, 2020 through December 31, 2022, pending corporate council review and approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion passes seven zero. All right, and that brings us to the proposed new contract for Bay Area Transit.
I could address that. April did have the opportunity yesterday to meet with the staff of BETA. They are going to meet again and hopefully come up with a revised proposal. That has not happened yet, so she's requesting that it's just be moved to December meeting.
Commissioner Wessel.
I do, I, I, I agree with that, but I did receive an email, and I feel like I need to speak to this issue because the person that sent this to me was, was, was right. She said, Commissioner Wessel, you were quoted in the Record Eagle saying that people don't ride the bus unless they have to. I object to that perception and find it disrespectful and accurate in promoting unnecessary travel. And then she went on to say, often we, we need alternative schedules and we need a, need a bus to get to town, suggesting that riding the bus is undesirable, stigmatizes those who have no other means of transportation, those who are unable to drive for whatever reason, and those who choose this environmentally friendly and economic option. And I just, I wanted to publicly say, I, I aired in my public statement about, kind of off the cuff, why would anybody ride the bus if they didn't have to? So I stand corrected.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us then to out-of-state travel.
I move to allow Leelanaw County Senior Services Director April Messiah to attend the Aging in American Society on Aging 2020 Conference to be held March 24 through 27, 2020 in Atlanta, Georgia. Funds to come from the Senior Services Education and Travel Accounts.
I support. Twice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So that brings us to the dam authority. Do we have a recommended contractor? Commissioner Lautner?
I would move to approve the revised bid from, and enter into a contract with Fisher Contracting Company of Midland, Michigan for emergency repair work on the Leland Dam Control Room in the Mount Knott's, exceed $38,333.04. Funds to come from General Fund 101.
Support.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to A T and T.
I would...
Commissioner Lautner?
Okay. I would move to approve renewing an agreement with A T and T for Business Local Calling Unlimited Plan B on behalf of the Leland Dam Authority for the landline located in the Leland Dam Patrol Room at a 12-month term rate of $65 a line per month. Funds to come from account beginning in 805 and ending in 801000. Funds to come from account beginning in 805 and ending in 801.000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Commissioner, so this is...
I've given this a lot of thought on the dam and on reactivating the Lake Leland Assessment District. And what troubles me is, we don't have any concrete numbers yet. And I hate to see our staff start into a lot of work. When we don't have the numbers behind what it is we really need to do, either short-term or into the future. I asked that question of Drain Commissioner Christensen, and, you know, he gave a very honest answer, which was a ballpark figure that he wasn't comfortable with, but he really didn't know, he didn't have the numbers. And I think they've been working on this hard, trying to come up with something concrete. But I think it's a little unwise for us to move forward with reactivating a district, a special assessment district, or even work towards that if we don't know what the numbers are. I, for one, would like to know, what is it we're talking about before we engage everyone and start a lot of activity and engage our staff in doing a lot of activity? So, I would move that we postpone reactivation of the special assessment district until we have some firm numbers, or at least more firm numbers, as to what we're talking about cost-wise, so we can make an informed choice as to whether or not that's the direction we really want to move. Right now, I think it depends on, what are we talking about? How much is it going to be? That's my motion.
Yes. Wait for a second before...
I'll second.
Commissioner Ansorgi.
You have to understand the special assessment process.
I do.
The process, you know, you can establish the district, and you do, before you actually know what the numbers are. Very common, very common. And all we're doing is asking for that district to be reestablished so that they can go through that work of identifying who's in the district, with lot splits and changes and ownership and all that. They need to have that accurate list of those people within the district. So, we're not approving what's going to be done. We're not approving money. All we're approving is reestablishing the district. So, I do not support the motion for that reason.
Commissioner Redbaugh.
I seconded it for first purposes of discussion. I don't believe that I'm going to be supporting it either. It is, I attended one of the more recent draft dam board meetings, and what Commissioner Ansorgi is saying is, the work really needs to be done by the Equalization Department to determine all these lot splits and so on, before any action can be taken, which would involve the scope of work or the dollar amounts. So, I won't be supporting it either.
Commissioner Launer had her hand up. Did you want to speak to this, or not?
I will pass right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I understand what you're saying. And I think my question is, really, do we want to reactivate the special assessment district? Because to me, that's still a question, as to, depending on how much money we're really talking about, is this something we're going to push off as a special assessment onto our citizens, as opposed to covering the costs ourselves? So, it sounds like we don't have support for this motion. So, I will withdraw the motion. However, I will be voting against the motion as it's listed from last week.
Is that okay with the second, if you...
Yes.
So, do we have another motion then? Commissioner Launer.
I would recommend, I would move to approve reactivating the Lake Leland Water Level Special Assessment District.
Second.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Okay, Darren, beginning the process of, as stated, identifying the number of lots, all of the new splits, and how the costs would be shared. And I think it's important that we begin this as soon as possible so that we can begin to recoup any expenses spent on the dam. We are going to have some, we're going to have to cover now as it is. So, I think the sooner we start this process, the better.
Commissioner Ansorgi.
Redundant to what she said.
Yeah, I guess I've talked with Mr. Pope a couple times, and he's actually, and I think he showed at least $200,000 in expenses that he can see in the next five years. And it's probably going to be much more than that. So, you know, through what OSHA has demanded, what the problems we're having with the water and all that. And I, you know, I think that's a reasonable thing to reset this up. You know, if that's what we're just starting with, rather than coming out of that. Go ahead.
Well, in the meeting that I attended, they were really talking about tenure. The tenure look ahead because of the rising water issues and the current, you know, expenses that they know will be incurred with the repairs that are already on the horizon. So, really, I think it's very helpful to have that district reactivated.
All right. This is just a regular vote, I don't think this is a resolution. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So, the motion passes six to one. Thank you. And that brings us then to the Drain Commission, approval contract for amendment number two. Do we have an AT&amp;T?
No, we did that, yeah, we already did that. Sorry. Sorry.
Mr. Launer.
I would move to approve a contract amendment number two with ENG Incorporated for final design engineering and bid services for the Schaumburg Drain in the amount not to exceed $28,605, pending corporate council review and approval. Funds to come from 101.690.275.967.000.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. And that brings us to the County Clerk in the Raymond Form 1095B Service Agreement. Commissioner Wessel.
I move to approve the service agreement with Raymond Robson LLC for service outlined in the agreement relative to the Affordable Care Act for an amount not to exceed $5,600. Funds to come from Accounting Contractual Services in account ending 801.000 at the rates outlined in Schedule A, services and fees.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to the contract renewal. Commissioner Wessel.
I move to waive the board of policy on bid requirements and approve a five-year contract with Raymond Robson LLC for county audit services and road commission audit services at the cost provided.
Second.
I did go over to the Road Commission today, they had called me about this, because they weren't very aware of what was going on. When we voted on it last week, they heard about it, and they wanted to know. And then, I talked with Chet, and he and Michelle and Jen all went over, and we explained it to them, what we were doing. They just felt a little like we should have let them know sooner. And so, I apologized for that, and told them that, you know, we were trying to work with them and that. So, I think they took it pretty well, but they were a little bit miffed because we just did it and didn't say anything to them.
Well, Mr. Bunnic is being humble, but really, we should have contacted them. We took responsibility. It's not Mr. Bunnic's responsibility to notify them. We should have done that, so we take responsibility.
I also received a call from the Road Commission, and they felt that their board should have been made aware of this and had an opportunity to weigh in on the issue. And I don't know if that should have been something that should have been afforded to them? Or, you know, did we supersede their board's...
Well, legally, it's decided by this county board, not the Road Commission. They are subcomponent of the county.
Yes.
Should we have probably notified them? Yes. Legally, though, it's the county's decision. And I think, at least my opinion was, there was four commissioners there today. Three of them actually left were complimentary about the fact that we're picking up the cost.
Okay.
The three that spoke.
I just didn't know if they should have been included, you know, in the conversation.
From a courtesy standpoint, probably, yes.
Commissioner Launer.
Every year is a new year, but this isn't a new concept. We've talked about it every other year for years. So, it isn't a new concept. Probably could have told them what we intended to do, I agree.
And we did explain to them that, even though it's every other year, their audit is part of our annual report every single year. So, there is cost involved to us. And truly, this is a cost savings for them. And it actually, if you look, the cost that Raymond proposed for the first year is actually lower than what we're paying now. So, I really think it's a win-win. And I think, I want to speak to the Road Commission, but three of them publicly commented they appreciate and supported, and one just had questions, and one was listening. So, I think we accomplished our goal. Obviously, we should have, at least out of courtesy, called them to know this was coming. Now, a couple of them do get our board tax, so they knew it was in there. But, yes, out of common courtesy, we should have, of course.
I didn't support this originally, just because I felt we should have talked to them and see if they wanted to help pay for that. But, putting on my taxpayer hat, if I was sitting out there, it's probably a good thing from a taxpayer's standpoint, just to say, I don't care whether it's us or them, it's the right thing to do. So, I will support it, just from that standpoint. Looking at it from a taxpayer's standpoint, it's the right thing to do. But, if we're going to talk to them, we should talk to them.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Then that brings us to, I'm just asking on the administrator's evaluation, if you could hand that in to me, and I can, I would put them together, make totals, and, you know, then we can have an evaluation. I'll probably meet with Chet with it after I get them all tabulated.
Done by?
Soon as you can. For sure, before the next, yeah, before the next, or at the next meeting.
Okay.
I'd like Mr. Ansorgi to suggest them. I just will do it on your behalf, if you like.
I did not suggest that. I said, you probably were going to do that.
No, I heard the same thing.
Thank you, thank you very much, Commissioner.
It's really kind of you, though, to talk.
So, then that moves to the Leland County Substance Abuse Coalition? The contract, Commissioner Wessel.
I move to approve the agreement between Leland County and Greg McMerrill for consultant services on behalf of the Leland County Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. And presented funds to come from account ending in 967.019.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to the 2% allocations. Commissioner Redbaugh.
I move to approve the 2% tribal allocation request for Leland Family Court on behalf of Child and Family Services Safe Haven Program for the amount of $7,650.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Commissioner Redbaugh.
Move to approve a 2% tribal council allocation request for Leland Family Court to replace worn equipment for the Guys Group and Voices and Choices programs for the amount of $11,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes six-one. Commissioner Redbaugh.
I move to approve the 2% tribal council allocation request for Leland Michigan State University Extension 4H STEAM Science Technology Engineering Arts and Music Program. Mayor Core Service Member for the amount of $8,729.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes seven-zero. Commissioner Redbaugh.
Move to approve the 2% tribal council allocation request for Leland County Parks and Recreation Commission for invasive species eradication and youth works for the amount of $12,000.
Second.
Would this include mowing?
Mowing?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thinking of that, you know.
Sorry. Probate court?
Move to approve the 2% tribal council allocation request for Leland County Probate Court to administer the funds to replace the truck used by Leland Christian Neighbors for the amount of $22,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes four to three. And a solid waste council?
Move to approve the 2% tribal council allocation request for the Leland County Solid Waste Council 2020 Tire Collection and Recycling for the amount of $6,500.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to DNW Mechanical Proposed Service Contract Renewal. Commissioner Redbaugh.
Move to approve the proposed three-year HVAC inspection and service agreement between Leland County and DNW Mechanical, Traverse City, Michigan, pending legal council review and approval. Funds to come from account ending in 801.000 and account 801.001.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero.
Motion necessary?
Well, typically, it is, because you could. But, let me give you an update date, based on your recommendation last week. I contacted the individual that was willing to make the payment, and I received the check this morning. And between that, an internal person is going to cover the cost of the late fees. It may be reversed, may not. The credit card invoice will be paid tomorrow with two private checks, using no county funds. Now, in theory, these are motion, you could change that, but it would probably be helpful to pass the motion if you do ask.
Commissioner Launer.
So, I would make a motion to not use county funds, but accept private payment to pay for the tokens purchased by the Sheriff's Office.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Then the recommendation for the county clerk and the staff, recognition of them?
Yes, I move to recognize and commend the county clerk and the clerk's office staff for their responsible oversight and compliance with the county budget and purchasing policy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Do we need a resolution for that?
They accept cash, too.
Credit payment.
Daytime travel policy?
At this point, we would request that this be postponed to next month. We just received the draft policy for the council yesterday. We've not had a chance to review it. So, this time, requesting that you postpone this to December, as well as the invoice associated with this situation, we postpone the mandate until December. Is that correct, ma'am clerk, if you do?
Aye.
Okay.
I agree.
Do we know which invoice number that is?
Ma'am.
It's separate.
When it comes to that, you can...
So, we have review of financials. No questions from the committee?
Questions?
All right. Seeing none, then any committee reports, recommendations, or resolutions? Seeing none, I'll go to special staff reports, commissioners, affiliated agencies.
Just one, there was a question last week about an invoice for the repair of the... for the repair of the sockets here above the building. We fell off them at...
Rain gutters?
The rain gutters.
Okay.
Yes. That was damaged by a window clean company. They took responsibility. And I believe the cost for the repair was $600 some dollars. What they did is they agreed that they would cover that. So what they did is they cleaned the windows next time, when actually the cost was more, but they not invoice us. So in fact, we, they took care of it.
Trade.
Yeah. So it worked out well.
And they didn't put their ladder on it again.
But I appreciate them taking responsibility with no issues. So that's why you have a bill there. But there's no bill to clean the windows for that cycle.
So then that brings, any other comments? No. Brings us to public comment.
Good evening again. Some thoughts about agenda items. Some don't have any dollars attached to them, and some do. Like item six, 6K, there's no dollars involved. Also, the beta contract for transportation. I saw in the minutes from Tuesday that both contracts call for the same dollar amount. One is loose sense and one is not. So I don't know whether, the dollars are the same, so why have a different motion here?
Two vendors.
Pardon me?
Two different vendors.
Okay. For a beta bus? For the beta bus?
Oh, beta.
In your Tuesday's minutes, it says both of them, both the motion that was denied and the motion that was carried were at $16,000 some dollars. And I'm curious whether there is a greater dollar cost involved with one with the other. Apparently, there's not. So my question is, why was there a second motion if the dollars are the same? Maybe that's an error, so.
I could talk to you afterwards about that.
That's all right. I guess I got a lesson in apologetics tonight that local communities and their governments, if they are not aware of other organizations coming into their community, interfering in their community, it is the local community and the local government's officials' duty and responsibility to seek that out. It is not the duty of the interlopers to come in and tell us anything. They can do what they want. That's the way I understand it. More on planning and zoning. The comment at the meeting today, the planning commission, the discussion was noted by commissioners that many people come to them and ask them for action on zoning issues. And the commissioner said, we have to tell them, we have no role. We have nothing to do with planning and zoning. It involves him. And so the commissioner said that they're disappointed that the county can't do anything about planning and zoning. It's a fascinating area. So I'm beginning to wonder whether the competence of some of the people in our government is really there to understand what the laws are and what we should be doing, and whether we can really administer things properly if we don't understand what we should be doing, and whether the laws and the ordinances supposedly, and the plans, plans, thousands, hundreds of thousands of goals are never implemented, or at least there's no report on them. But we keep on doing it. I just heard tonight, we'll let them do it. We'll just let them do it. But they're doing it whatever it costs. It's okay. So I see this as a full-year costly and risible tragedy for county taxpayers and electors. I don't know anything we've gained from it, except perhaps interfering with township government and trying to hold sanctions and coerce townspeople to attend meetings of county planning commission when the county planning commission has no jurisdiction or authority. In other words, it seems to me like the county is trying to be involved and doesn't care if their departments or agencies can spend literally millions of dollars trying to control people's lives and want to eliminate people from being self-reliant and independent thinking. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Go to financials. Oh, post, I'm sorry. We have the post audit. Or amendments, I'm sorry, amendments and transfers.
I would move to approve Amendment Number 19-014 and 19-015. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero.
I've moved to approve fund transfer 19-006. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero.
I've moved to approve claims and accounts $735,620.88.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero.
I would move to approve post audit $11,668,117.7.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Commissioner Wesson.
We missed commissioner comments, I think. And I wanted to just, we got an email from Laurel. And I thought maybe about the staff Christmas period. And maybe we had just a second to talk about that. In fact, she was asking us whether we wanted to provide a dish or a meat platter or whatever. It's easier to decide that here than...
Right.
I suggest would be helpful, if you're there for her, we have plenty of dishes. If you like to do what you've done in the past, make a contribution, that covers the meat as well as the plates and sort of where...
Make a contribution?
Yes, I think it would most appreciate.
That was part of her suggestion, either that or bring a dish, so.
Contribution.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry I skipped that. Are there any other commissioners? All right, we are adjourned.